What's your next thought?
I know it's like, I'm not here.
What's your next thought?
People are probably wondering what.
Just give it over to you.
Kirk. There's safety meeting tomorrow. There is? Crap.
Where's your boss?
Yeah, yeah, I do. Never mind, I don't need you. Go back.
Good evening and welcome to the Shippensburg area school district committee of the whole. I'm gonna pass it over to Mr. August.
Thank you, Mrs. Eberly. We have a number of presentations tonight. I'd like to start with Mrs. Kirkpatrick and our WITF upcycling innovation challenge honorees.
I'm the K to eight gifted teacher and I was presented with a contest through WITF called the upcycling innovations challenge and I presented it to all of my sixth through eighth gifted students and a few took me up on it. The ones that are here today, one is missing, he's not feeling well, they decided to do it. So what they had to do was either create a piece of artwork, jewelry, or an invention. They had to use as much recycled materials as they could. The artwork and the jewelry also had to display a sustainability message as well. So they didn't have a lot of time. We meet every other day for 45 minutes, but at the same time, the other kids were working on other stuff. So they were multitasking on their projects. As the deadline got closer, they realized they might run out of time. So they even came during resource, even during their lunches towards the very end. We found out on a Monday that the four of them, they had made it to the next round, the final round, which was in person in Harrisburg and they had to present in front of a panel of judges. That same week, my oldest had a collapsed lung and was hospitalized and had to have surgery. So I was not able to not prepare them and wasn't able to attend. So I want to give huge kudos to their parents. They got them there, found out on Monday, they needed to be in Harrisburg on a Saturday in the evening. So they got them there and they presented in front of the judges all on their own. So I'm very proud of them and I'm gonna let them share their projects.
I am 11 years old and I'm in sixth grade at the middle school. I made a project using copper wire, paper, and cardboard and hot glue. It is depicting a stick figure throwing a paper ball into a recycling bin as opposed to a trash can. Like, I made it to show that there's another option as opposed to throwing things away and like letting it end up in like a landfill or ocean or something like that. And I wanted it to like appeal to many different ages. It wasn't something that only some people would understand.
I'm Jordan and I'm in seventh grade and I made two projects and they both ended up getting in. And this one is a girl planting flowers and that's how it shows sustainability and what you can do to promote environmental things. So I used tons of different medias and stuff like that, like the bottoms coffee grounds and this is completely recycled. So I want this to show people that just because you can't use something for one purpose doesn't mean you can't turn it into something else. And for my other one, I made a rubber bead necklace and all these different papers, all these different beads are made out of paper. And like these ones are just like leftover construction paper I had. These ones are chorus music that my chorus teacher had to reprint and stuff, so he was gonna throw them out, so I just asked for a copy. These are from a newspaper. These ones are extra construction paper and I actually found my name in the newspaper, so that was cool. And then I used it on the same side, so. And the string, I actually found it laying outside, so that's recycled too. And the clip that I used, I got off an old piece of jewelry that had broken, so I just had to reuse that. Oh yeah, I also won runner-up for this one, so I ended up winning a hundred dollar Amazon gift card and stuff, so.
My name's Danica Whitmer. I'm in seventh grade and I made this sea turtle. It's meant to represent how most people do not recycle or cut up these paper rings and they get into landfills or in the ocean and they harm the environment and the animals living in it and I wanted to show awareness for that. And most of the materials I got from Mrs. Kirkpatrick's room and the paper ring I got from my own drinks.
So, Ms... So, just to be clear, this was like a regional competition?
Yes, I mean, as far as I know, yes. I'm not quite sure how many people applied, but we know that 24 finalists made it to the final round.
Okay.
Yep.
And four of our students did as well.
Four of our students made it and then Jordan was runner-up for the accessories.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Anytime we do awesome things, we like to, you know, have an opportunity for...
I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Kirkpatrick. Thank you, students.
Thank you.
At this point, can we have the Mary Jane Taylor Education Mini Grants program recipients presentation? Thanks to all the teachers that made it out tonight, we appreciate it.
I think we have five teachers, if I'm not mistaken. I don't think everyone's here. If you are in the audience and I didn't and I don't recognize you, I'm sorry. So the Mary Jane Taylor Education Mini Grant Program is conducted and run by Dr. Cheryl Slattery, who's been with the foundation for 20, almost 20 years. And she's sorry she can't be with us this evening, but all of the program recipients this evening are brand new, first-time grant awardees. And I wish that after next year, we'll be able to award all the people who apply for these grants. And I have to say, though I'm not on the selection committee, I did read all of the grants. And all of you guys, as teachers, I'm sorry, you're spectacular. Your innovations and what you're doing in the classroom and the care and the passion that you're showing your students is bar none. I'd put you up against anyone in this country. So, I'm just gonna call you all down. Brooke, I know you're in the audience, if you wouldn't mind coming down. Brooke is receiving a, is at the intermediate school and she's getting an award for classroom services in fourth and fifth grade life skills. I don't think Ashley Coy or Jason Hoover are in the audience, am I right? Okay. Caitlin Kressler, Senior High School, come on down. Caitlin is a teacher in special education and her grant is creating a physically conducive environment for differentiated learning. Congratulations. Danielle? Danielle is a teacher at James Byrd, K through three life skills, and her grant was around natural environment teaching. Oh. I missed one. No? Okay. Marcy's getting one. She's ninth, ninth through 12th grade, special education here at the high school for resolution room self-regulation support. And it's a really cool grant to read. Jennifer and Carrie, Jennifer Flinchbaugh, Carrie Krebs. Jennifer, as you know, is also on the board of the Greyhound Foundation and she did not know she would be receiving this. They are at the middle school. And they're going to be rehabbing, from what I understand, the area outside of the school for teaching outdoor, well, teach, I don't know what you're teaching in the outdoors, but it's an outdoor classroom, right? Which is very cool. So, thank you to all of our mini grant recipients and the teachers. If all of you could read these grants and see what people are putting together because of the passion they have for teaching in the classroom, be incredibly proud too. All right, on to the next.
Well, transitioning, I would just like to thank the teachers for putting that time and effort into getting the grant money. And certainly, you know, the theme for tonight's committee of the whole seems to be innovation. You know, these are, you know, big swings that our teachers are taking. They're things that have, they've found that, you know, the foundation is able to help with and, you know, thanks to the foundation as well, you know, for giving the resources to allow these things to be tried. So thank you, thank you all for your efforts on this.
Okay, thank you for letting us speak tonight. I'm Philip Feg. Been on the foundation for longer than I dreamed I would be, but it's been fun and thank you for your contribution to the community, serving on the school board. So, I know it's not easy taking time away from your family. And I want to thank the school board also, it's unanimous decision to have Sue come on board and I hope you, as much as we appreciate all her expertise is given to the community and going into the future and what she's done so quickly in her short time here, so thank you. I just wanted to give a brief update on the financial results within the foundation. So we sit on roughly a million, $30,000. You might say, wow, that's a lot, but of that, roughly two-thirds of it's restricted. And restricted means that the donor has made restrictions through scholarships or EITC grants or whatever that's restricted for a specific purpose. But roughly 370,000 is unrestricted, which we use for, right now I think we're helping with the hotspots as far as kids getting internet, but it's just a number of things we're doing, ongoing programs. But the goal is that we want to get to a million dollars within the unrestricted because and I've served on the United Way in Shippensburg and other organizations where now they're self-sustaining and it took time to do that. Once they're self-sustaining, basically, they really provide a real benefit to the community and it's in perpetuity. So, another area I belong to is the cemetery, Spring Hill Cemetery, it has to last forever. So, we wanted to build an endowment fund there. So anyways, want to do the same thing here at the school district. Again, 373,000, but we, if it wasn't for the investment return, this has been a great year, obviously, when you look at the stock market, but we would have a deficit each year. But because we do the 300, we at least sustain kind of a neutral budget. But we want, in the future, to get that to a million, it will allow us to fully fund Sue and everything we're doing. But in the meantime, we do need the school board's help and I hope you'll work with us till we, till we get there and we will get there, so thank you. Any other, any questions? I'd be happy to anytime entertain, you know, any of your questions or things that we can do, so thank you.
Any questions for Phil? Go ahead, Mr.
I don't have a question, but more just to thank you to everyone on the foundation because, you know, as you just said, thanks to us for sitting up here and doing a public service, you guys are doing the same thing. So, there's all volunteer stuff, you know, if, got to know the foundation a little bit and the people involved and they're so, so excited about Shippensburg and the community and I just think it's a great partnership.
Thank you, David.
I asked Sue, but we see the small grants, a thousand here, but in the total big picture, how, how much money do you think you've given back to the school district? how how much money do you think you've given to back to the school district, the foundation for grants and different things? I I I was on, I know, I am not for exact number.
I mean, I will step in because I look at those numbers all the time. So since twenty twenty-one, I think I shared it, not this past August, but a couple, a few months prior, that had come to with the hotspots included, that Phillip's talking about about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars in those few years' time and then since September and these financials came out, there'll probably be another forty or so added to that. So I it's um I I think the real question becomes to, with regard to the strategy in having hired me last year, so almost a year and a half ago now. It was May twenty-three and all of you came together because what you wanted to do was retain me to carry out a comprehensive fundraising strategy, right? And a lot on what people on on what, a lot of what is on your minds has been about the facilities and where do we go from here? There were um strategies put into place quite a few years ago that was called and had a different name, I can't think of it right now. Flagship proud, thank you. When I went back to assess and and I think the reason you hired me too was also to step in and assess the organization's current development around um how the operation for not only the foundation, but also the school district was situated to be able to raise large capital money. And I think we've we've all gone through a lot of this as homework and we've digested, metabolized and percolated and we have quite a few trustees and and Phillip himself, who has shared out loud that because of the shifting sands of everywhere uh of where we've been with regard to turnover and changes and school board elections and politics and um, you know, the town versus district, there's so much that continues to shift and move. When you go into large capital campaign fundraising strategies, you need to come with a scope that is clearly defined, especially when you're going for very large funding. People don't want to to work with a a changing tide and it's been very consistently changing for many, many years. I think you would all agree with that. Where we are now is closer to a situation than we've ever been before to meet with success. I know that, you know, I have spoken to Mr. Augna- August on multiple occasions, he comes to our board meetings. Phillip and I, of course, are constant contact as are our foundation trustees. And the strategy that's being put forward now so that we can entertain and work and move forward into larger fundraising strategies, um got the seal of approval from Stock and Leader as of Saturday, because Bill sent that to me and it is an RFP and it will help define a strategy that will allow us to potentially raise the amount of money that we were always hoping to raise, but never could because if you if you had a feasibility study done, which there was one done quite a few years ago, but it wasn't robust enough when the changing tides were continuing. Now we're closer than ever, Fred, I will say to you, given the question you asked me a little while ago, to being able to pull it, um that's not the, that's not the term I want to use, um to be able to step forward into a uh situation with some of our partners who have been waiting in the wings to come in and support us and, you know, pru- I I don't want to, I didn't want to get into this strategy out loud in in the public domain.
I'm to look over.
But it is.
That's all.
We are poised to be able to keep moving forward, okay? One of the things that I will share tonight and I think it kind of segues into the next piece is one of the things um that we know how to do, some of us are stepping into being able to share communication collateral and marketing materials and be project managers around fundraising campaigns. So while we have a larger strategy for naming rights of facilities that will also help support other situations for us around fundraising, you have it.
The sports one?
The other piece that will help us do that, and this is eighteen pages long, but if you want to click through, you will see that a documents be that's being created still in draft form, some questions are being answered, thank you, Tim Hess, are you here? I know you answered a few of them when they got sent to you last week and there are still a few out there. But this will help guide where we want to go with some of the proposals for what happens next. And it'll be a document that's living and breathing and it'll be myself, Tim, Phillip, our trustees, some of you, the community, hopefully a coach and a student at the same time, will be able to utilize to help us realize some of the dreams we have for ourselves around what we would like to raise money for with regard to facilities. I just want you to see it, I brought it so you could see it and know that these things are happening behind the scenes. You have questions around?
I just, I I people just ask and I know you were doing things, I just wondered out that you have provided things.
So if I could just jump in, I I think it's it's really kind of a two-tiered thing or three tiers. One is Sue's work for directly for the foundation, where uh Sue's work for us through um, you know, grants and other uh, you know, opportunities, finding things for us, you know, whether it's through scholarships for teachers or or grants for teachers or, you know, you'll see on the agenda, uh the science kits um that are on the discussion agenda, you know, Sue's using the EITC money through the foundation to supplement that, to allow our teachers to to have some resources to 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 try out. On top of that is the the strategy about, you know, big capital, um, you know, fundraising that that we're all kind of interested in, um to enhance the stadium. Having said that, you know, we're on the cusp of being able to send a document out to large sponsors to be able to get and uh, you know, what what their, you know, interest is in in, you know, supporting that project. So I I think we've we've been, you know, churning at the the building and and the grant level for a while, but I think we're ready to take the steps, as Sue said, to to get these uh get the RFP um paperwork in the hands of sponsors to to really get a a look at what what can happen in that area. So it's pretty exciting.
It is very exciting.
Other questions for Sue or Phil? And and I just want to say again, every opportunity, thank you to the foundation, countless hours of volunteer time, um all for the benefit of the district and the kids. It is unsung public service and and I thank you so much for everything all of you do to make that happen, so thank you, you know, thank you so much.
I apologize, I thought there were gonna be about four people here tonight. If you two could maybe share and uh you two could maybe share a little bit there and uh you two grab schools.
Thanks.
You two and maybe there two and you both get one, how about that?
So are any of you familiar with phase one of the Dykeman Road Project? Little bit. Let's start with phase one. Phase one was partnership between Shippensburg Borough, Southampton Township, Cumberland County. And phase one is going to run between uh South Fayette Street red light and uh basically Baltimore Road at the Giant, or there's a there's a school, or I'm sorry, the church that's along Baltimore Road on the other side of Giant. Collaboration between the two entities has secured about two million dollars worth of funding for that. It's owned by the borough already, a property, not shown on the map that you're looking at. But phase one is funded mostly, uh it's currently in design phase. I fully expect construction to begin next year. This year we'll be doing um all of the engineering, but it's past the preliminary phases of archaeological surveys, um search for spayed-toed frogs, endangered species of um plant life, that that's all that's that's all passed and so we're really in in design phase. So phase one is moving along. Phase two that you see in front of you, well, that paper that I've given you is is really representative of both phase one and phase uh two and three. Phase two is highlighted in green, um which would run from Airport Road to the intermediate school. Phase three that you'll see, um the s- we'll say the lower left-hand side of that page uh is Asper Drive, so if you if you were to drive along Baltimore Road and turn into Giant, that is Asper Drive. If you drive straight to the end of that road, you get to a dead end, um that's where phase three would begin and run over the railroad tracks, pass the intermediate school and connect into phase two. Phase two, from a funding perspective, um Southampton Township has partnered with both Shippensburg Township and a grant writing firm, GMS, Government Management Solutions. We've applied for two different grants through Department of Transportation. Those grant announcements should come in November. We have sales agreement secured with the property owner, it's all moving forward. The part that um we're very hopeful that the school board will allow us to do is is partner with you to get phase three done. We in Southampton Township don't care if that road goes into the school or not, really don't don't want it to, but if there's a little offshoot, you see the little offshoot, if the school wants to have a roadway go into there, that's fine, if not, you can put a gate on it, we don't care. We feel that it's important for the safety and security of our residents and children to have two modes of ingress egress of that road or into that school. At the uh whole whole onset of this project was the Uvalde shooting, Texas. My board looked at the security of that uh school and uh determined that it needed a second mode of ingress egress and we're willing to fund it with 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 no no input from the school board, we just feel that strongly about it. We're we're securing the property, we want to partner with you, we really hope that you'll be willing to partner with us. Overarching for our community, we all know that downtown area is a disaster zone from a traffic perspective, not to mention Orange Street. The completion of phase three, two and one will allow a true bypass through the whole downtown area, be able to transfer from Airport Road all the way to, well, exit twenty-four all the way to exit twenty-nine, uh really without going downtown at all. Uh I think that our community needs it. As a side benefit to you, there's uh that property that's around phase two, adjacent to it, certainly is up for uh purchase. If you wanted to purchase it, put in a new gymnasium, I think it'd be a good opportunity for you. The landowner lives in Lititz, uh she's an elderly person and when she passes on, I know it'll go for sale. Her sons don't have any interest in owning it. That being said, you probably could get ahead of the game if you want to, that's just a suggestion I'm from me to you. So that's kind of my presentation in a nutshell, we really would hope that you'd be willing to provide some uh some support for that. We'll probably continue getting uh our grant writers to provide uh more grant opportunities through county or state, federal level, certainly phase three will require federal levels. We expect that to have a bridge across it and that's you're going from a couple of million dollars to thirty million dollars pretty fast. I welcome any questions that you may have.
When you say support, what 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 do you mean by that, Mr. Mack, from the from the district?
Well, that part of phase three definitely goes through school property, so we would need that piece of property be deeded to Shippensburg Township, that's one piece. I think from a financial perspective, Shippensburg Township, Southampton Township, the borough doesn't really, we don't we don't need any financial support from you, uh but we we don't want to have roadblocks either, so we're just looking for favorable uh uh hands and working with, I mean, we we in Southampton Township are willing to pay all legal fees, title transfers, deed work, we're not asking for any monetary support at all, but if we get a grant that comes through that we'd like to apply to, we would like to be able to say, hey, the school board is on board, uh is 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 supportive of that initiative for the greater community, that's really all we're caring about.
And and that offshoot road that looks like goes to our parking lot, is is that something that that?
Totally negotiable.
Would that be something that you you guys would pay for?
Sure, sure. Yeah, absolutely. And like I said, we don't care, I know there's some uh hullabaloo about whether or not traffic will be increased going down into um that community, I find that to be um, how do I want to say this? Without a traffic study, you 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 couldn't determine that and without a road, you can't do a traffic study. There's no way to determine without a road, how much traffic is going to go down there. I can tell you that the fact that there's going to be large developments along Airport Road, low-income housing, right now is going in forty-eight units and in the grant that we have, we'll have multimodal, which sidewalks and so on, through phase two that would go to the intermediate school. So we expect more foot traffic, that's and a whole other initiative that we're working with Shippensburg Township to do and will probably be even greater into the borough, is to really look at sidewalks, how are people moving? There's a lot of people that walk on Baltimore Road, there's no sidewalks. Airport Road, no sidewalks, you go past Walmart into the Deerfield area, no sidewalks, but people are walking there. So that's another grant initiative that we're looking to uh partner with, really it'd be PennDOT, but to get money to do a regional multimodal traffic study and when I say that, I mean bicycles, walking vehi- vehicular, uh from a regional perspective and really we need, our our community in Southampton Township really needs walking paths and and this phase two is part of that multimodal a- and phase three would have walk paths that would connect the Giant Grocery Center through those low-income housing units, the apartment buildings in Deerfield, so that foot traffic can go to the school, can get to the grocery store, even the casino, right, wherever they go. But we we have to look at it as holistic and, you know, from my perspective. But for you, the benefit, of course, would have two modes of ingress egress, if you want it, for for school buses or for student foot traffic um to get to that school.
I understand, I I understand what you're saying, if I'm coming down Airport Road and I can take that road across through Holler Heights, that what you're talking about?
I don't know why anybody would go through Holler Heights because the bypass would go to Giant.
Okay, well, the Giant gonna come by, through through Giant, over and cross the road, cross Baltimore Road into the other road there and that'll take you over to the thing, correct? I I'm trying to figure out how you're gonna, where you even Asper Road.
Asper Road goes next to Giant, yes.
That was the premise and going to go straight out.
Yep.
So you're telling me it won't affect As- it won't affect Holler Heights at all?
It doesn't have to, if if the school doesn't want to have access to that, again, that's that's school property, right? So if the school, if you if the school board wants to gate that off, all we care about is having fire, EMS, ambulance, National Guard, whatever, two modes of ingress egress to that school. That's a safety and security issue that everybody knows that one point of ingress egress, any security officer will tell you is required two points of ingress egress.
If you if you're coming.
And whether or not Holler Heights has more traffic or not is completely superfluous to the safety of those students, that's my opinion.
But that that when you're trying to put safety.
Yep.
Something else.
Yes, you are.
I'm asking what the functionality, we put, we do that and this road goes through here, like I like I'm saying, from here, yeah, Holler Heights, down here, the roads go down there.
The road goes to Giant. Phase three goes over the railroad tracks to Asper Drive.
Asper Drive and Asper Drive jumps over Baltimore by by Farmington and goes straight out to air out to Scotland.
Yes.
Okay, so we're missing Holler, which is my, one of my main.
Holler Heights wouldn't even be, uh wouldn't wouldn't even be affected.
All right, but when people travel, you you they won't have to come, they won't have to go by the school at all, what you're saying here.
They go right past the school.
Okay. That was one of the big, and they tried this, Burr tried this last year, didn't they? Called a farmer bought a lot, big farm up there and. Because a farmer bought a big farm up there, and they were going to develop it, but it wouldn't pass. Is that correct?
Uh, there's, you're misremembering a little bit.
No.
Right. So we tried to get support from the school board a couple of years ago to do this, and it was shot down because there was some people that lived in Holler Heights that really had a hullabaloo. But the children that are commuting from Hope Old Township, Southampton Township, Southampton Franklin, that go to that school should be paramount, in my opinion, than whether or not there's two or three more cars that go down Holler Avenue. That's my opinion.
But that's your opinion, but you don't live there, so the people have their opinion.
If I can just add, I mean, I don't want to get into much the security and safety aspect to give a whole lot away, but intermediate school currently has free, even emergency access, if there would be an emergency that required immediate evacuation, and if someone would blockade that, there is one way into the intermediate school and one way out. This proposal would allow traffic to flow in both directions versus one way in, one way out, because of the intermediate school being at a dead end.
Well, there's, I understand. I have no problem. I just want to make sure the people in that area are covered.
Right. And so along with the people, I mean, while we do have to keep them also in mind, and, you know, you live down that way, you know, Dr. Goetz lives that way, but when we're talking about the safety of our children and the staff, I know that staff have also come to me that they feel insecure and unsafe being at a building with only one access point and one exit point, which is the same point.
I'm not arguing that point. I agree that it was stupid to build a building there in the first place. I found that was in the place. It was just dumb because it was out there by itself. And I'm not arguing.
And while we're looking at, you know, hardening our buildings and approving a contract for our school resource officer, SSO, this would also help them in the event that there would be a catastrophic event. So I think. But then having studies from the Pennsylvania State Police with also the suggestion of having another exit.
There is another exit, but, because I, when I was chief, I designed, we designed with the fire right next to the left side of the thing, but that's immaterial.
If I could jump in, I can say that the Borough Council, Shippensburg Borough Council, which represents that district, is supportive of this project. Your representatives are supportive of it.
I agree. They want the road, and that's why they tried to build it before. I just want to make sure that progress doesn't affect the people. If you can do that, then I'm fine with it.
But it also, when we say affect the people, we are also representing student body and are responsible for their safety, while we're also responsible to stakeholders and community members. Our job as board members are to represent the safety of our staff, who are ultimately responsible for the safety of our children.
I agree with that part, but I guess that, I just want to make sure.
Dr. Lyman, I think you had a question.
You briefly mentioned a piece of property for a gym or something. Can you be a little more specific about where that is on our little map here?
Yeah, sure. Generally, it's everything that's in tan is deeded property. There's like 50 acres there. It's a large piece of property.
That's a big gym.
It's, as you imagine, another school, whatever. I mean, you could put a whole lot of schools in there if you wanted to.
So everything in tan is essentially what you're talking about that the woman in Liddit owns?
Generally, yes.
The state bought it for her, her husband and her, because they bought, the state bought her farm down in Liddit. So they, to transfer land to land, they bought this farm and a local farmer farm. Reason why I know, it's right behind me. That's how I know where it's at.
Mr. Mack, what do you need from the school board on this?
At this point, I don't need anything, really. Just in the future, if something comes up, and we're going to submit for another grant, I'm sure of it, in the future. So this is an informational briefing, really, at this point. We had a grant that we applied to a couple of weeks ago, and I'm remiss in not coming to you beforehand to get a letter of support for that initiative. That deadline has passed. So I wanted to brief you, bring you up to speed where we're at with Phase One, where we're at with Phase Two. Phase One, we're cutting dirt soon. Phase Two, we're in the process of finalizing details, and if we can get more money, great. And I'd love to get more money, so we don't have to use as much money of mine. We're willing to. We would like to have it done sooner than later, this particular Phase Two. So we're going to continue to apply for grants, and if it takes my constituents, you know, we'll put in $100,000 a year, and we'll just move some dirt as we can until it's done. But I'd like to have it done faster than not. So for now, I'd just like to thank you for your time, and if you have any questions for me in the future, if you want to know where we're at, what we're doing, how we're doing it, please ask me to come to another meeting, and I'm happy to brief you.
I thought I heard you say something about us, the board deeding some land over.
So Phase Three, yes, Phase Three that you see runs through school property. So that will be necessary for that property to be deeded to, and it's in Shippensburg Township. In order to get Phase Three completed, Township would have to own that property, right? We can't apply for grants to property that we don't own. So, but, and again, that comes back to a partnership, you know, but that absolves you from having to maintain the road at all, right? That gives it to Shippensburg Township. They'll collect liquid fuels money for it, maintain the bridge, and the county at that point would help with that, too, I'm sure, because that'll be a, that'll be a big bridge. And it would connect some disadvantaged communities, right? So with both school and shopping centers. So it's just broadly, it's, in my opinion, very good for the whole community.
Two questions for you. One, let me start. So the land that we're talking about, the last time that I remember this came up, it was maybe like a tenth of an acre, like it wasn't much. Do you know what this, how much this piece?
Phase Three?
Yeah, on the current plan.
Uh, I'd have to, it's maybe a tenth of an acre.
Yeah, it's not, I mean.
It's a minuscule amount of dirt, yes.
And the second thing would be, as, you know, everyone was talking about the Holler Heights issue, so what I've kind of gathered just looking at this is that wasn't real popular with different people or whatever, so we kind of went back to the drawing board to find a different solution, is what it seems like to me.
That's right.
That avoids that traffic.
Yes, two years ago, Phase Three didn't exist. So when we got some pushback from the communities, we decided to go back, find out how we can re-engineer, recalculate. So that little offshoot that goes down into the school originally was the phase, that's what we were going to do, was just connect Holler Heights with Airport Road. That was the fastest, easiest way to do it. That being said, the connecting Asper Drive is the only and is the last opportunity for our entire communities to have a bypass around Shippensburg. That is it. There isn't any place else, unless you're getting miles and miles and miles out of town. All the rest of it along Baltimore, or, I'm sorry, Airport Road, Baltimore Road have already been developed into communities, and some of the communities that are, actually, like the Michael Court that's right adjacent there, PennDOT said, well, why don't you just use that as your Phase Two? And the answer is, it's a private, kind of a mobile home, so it just, I can't apply for grants for private property. So this really is the last opportunity. There's no other place to do it.
Just looking at this, I wasn't like totally opposed to the last time that I heard it, but one thing that did strike some fear in me was the road that went from, I guess that's Holler, would be increased traffic, and I understood the people who live there, but I also thought about increased traffic that could go through there, and we have like elementary playgrounds, and sometimes we might have a kid or two decide to, you know, get happy feet or whatever. So I was a little fearful of that, but this takes that traffic away from all of that stuff.
And so, yeah, Phase Three is concept, what you see in that lower left-hand corner, right? We were happy to work with you. You put your thinking caps on, bring us ideas, if you want to have bigger road, less road. As long as I can get a fire truck in there or a state trooper, that's all I care about. And like I said, I don't mind it being locked. I really don't. Put a gate there. If that's what the school board wants, so that there's no access from outside public, if that's, you know, do your internal security thing, maybe there's opportunity for bad guys to do bad things, but if we can get good guys in there, too, that's okay, right?
So this is the last thing. This is the last thing you can do at there.
That's it.
But rudders wasn't supposed to be there.
Right.
It was supposed to go make that intersection, Airport Road and South Baltimore, it's supposed to be a straight shot over to the thing, and then they sold rudders, and that destroyed everything.
Right.
Yeah, the land that's on each side of this road, are there any, like, future plans in place as far as what's going to be built on that land? Is there any kind of like deed restrictions or?
By knowledge, there's no deed restrictions. There is a, there is a utility right of way along the north, I think, from your paper, I think, Fred, can I just see that real quick?
Actually, on the paper, I think it'd be like this extreme north side, there's like a water utility placement. No, I don't know of any plans. I know from a town perspective, we have a zone as village center for residential. So, but there's no developmental plans at all.
I just want to ensure, like, that's going to be in our backyard if we don't pursue it, and just make sure it's something that's community-friendly and like, you know.
So it's zoned for housing. So it could be townhouses, apartment buildings, single-family homes. It's ours anyways.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mack.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Scott. That concludes our committee of the whole, so we'll have a brief adjournment before we begin the planning and action meeting at eight.
Thank you.
This one.
Oh, God. It's like armpit.
Although Kirk doesn't trust my standard when it comes to teaching food.
It tastes like cherry, but oh my God, my tongue flapping in my head.
Hello and welcome back to the Shippensburg area school district planning and action meeting. Roll call please.
Mr. Jim Bard.
Here.
Mr. Mike Carey.
Here.
Mr. Levi Kressler.
Here.
Dr. Nathan Oates. Dr. Michael Lyman.
Here.
Mr. Kirk Noggle.
Here.
Mr. Fred Scott.
Here.
Mr. Darren Donovan.
Here.
This is Steph Everly.
Here. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. As we begin our deliberations this evening, let us once again be reminded of our duty to represent all of the children of this school community, regardless of age, sex, race, or creed, and regardless of need or ability. This meeting is being livestreamed and updated, uploaded to the district's YouTube channel. May we now have a moment of silence to reflect on our thoughts, plans, and actions on behalf of the students in the Shippensburg area school district. And we may remember Louise Pyle, 1949 graduate of Shippensburg area senior high school. John Gribble, 1955 graduate of Shippensburg high school, who also served in the United States Navy as a communications technician. Mary Kenyon, 1964 graduate of Shippensburg area senior high school. Linda Dixon, 1965 graduate of Shippensburg area senior high school, where she was valedictorian, concert master and majorette, and Donald Eugene Uglow, 1973 graduate of the Shippensburg area high school. Mr. August, are there any changes to this evening's agenda?
No, ma'am.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Fred Scott made a motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Scott, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carey. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Are there any citizens' comments?
So currently don't see any for this part of the agenda. Does anyone fill out a card? I think we got them. Okay. I don't see none.
Okay, reports from our student representatives. Mr. Blunt.
Hey, good evening, everyone. So to start off with some sports news, there, there isn't really much going on anymore. Football lost in their second round of playoffs on Friday, November 8th. They put up a tough game, losing 35-24. They had a great season. Winter sports tryouts are occurring this weekend. Basketball, wrestling, swimming, and winter bocce ball. In other events, the, we, the NHS National Honor Society will be hosting a food drive. All food collected will be donated to Spoh. Items accepted are boxed and canned foods. So there's like a point scale and a winner will be held. The point scale works by one point per boxed canned food donated and minus two for each piece of expired food donated. Frowned upon. The competition, competition will be held in first block classes from the 6th of November to the 6th of December. There will be a community night held at Sash's. It will be held December 12th from 5:00 to 8:30 PM in the high school. Many of the clubs that participate in the high school will be there assisting. A blood drive will be held in November. The Sash's Student Council will be assisting with this event. It is only open to Sash's students and teachers. The drama department is hosting Sherlock Holmes. Performances will be held the 21st and the 22nd at 7:00 PM each. And the 23rd at 2:00 PM and 7:00 PM. Please make sure you attend. So at Sam's right now, they have a be kind week from the 12th through the 15th. Sam's students will participate in activities such as writing thank you cards to veterans and catching others being kind. Be kind accessories will be sold at lunch for $1 apiece. There's also a spirit week. I don't have the actual list for that, but, and they're also going to have a holiday hangout sponsored by the Sam's PTO on Friday, November 15th from 2:45 to 4:15. That's all.
Thank you. Franklin County Career Tech Center, we will be meeting later in the month for that. Facilities Committee.
Good evening. We met on Thursday and Darryl Barnhart from maintenance had brought a few things to us. Discussion ensued on a robotic floor scrubber that Darryl had actually budgeted. I believe he had budgeted 70,000 in his budget originally. And he did some research and they came up with a newer version, which was cheaper in the $40,000 range, I think. And it looks like the labor savings probably may provide a payback in four years, but he did have it budgeted. So we recommended that we go ahead and purchase that. Also brought forth that we had some water heaters that we needed to, had, had been sent out for for bid. Mons was the low bid. The board facilities recommends that we go move forward with the purchase and replacement of the water heaters. They also brought to us, there was a sound system in the auditorium that failed. Decided to move forward to try to replace that sound system that was not in the budget. We also on our new projects, middle school, high school project, there's, the district has to hire folks to test, do our testing for concrete testing, weld testing. There's a gamut of testing that needs done. Site Logic had helped it and have come up with a company to do that and recommend, it looks like the total cost to be about $75,000. It's on tonight's agenda. The we talked about getting builder's risk insurance. We need to get that in place for the high school, middle school parent loop. And facilities recommended that we go ahead and get that accomplished. Talked about that and we have a change order with OES, our scoreboard. They ran into rock and OES quoted us a price of $30,000. ECI thought that was a little extensive. Still more information to come on that. So we'll have to wait and see where that goes.
So I received that, Mr. Noggle. It's $20,000. You know, we'll put it on the next agenda.
Okay.
Consideration.
Your answer. And an item came up at the end that it is on our agenda tonight that the district's getting rid of a basically scrapping a, a truck that has a box on the back of it. Enclosed box. There was Mrs. Wolfinger had expressed interest that band would like to have that box. And then the school would discard the, discard of the chassis. And so facilities recommends that we allow the band to have it as long as they take care of the aesthetics and get a good location to put the, put the box. So Darryl seemed to be on board with allowing that to happen. So we, we recommend that as well. That's it.
Thank you. Dr. Donat, curriculum report?
So I wanted to give you an update this week on our multilingual learners, so our EL learners. Go ahead, Leslie. So our EL teachers planned and hosted our annual EL family game night on Thursday, November 7th. We typically have about 10 to 15 people attend that. This past week, we had 74 people attend that evening. The pictures that you're seeing up on the screen are from that night. And that 74 number did not include all of our EL teachers who were there, plus Mrs. DeLonge and myself and some other teachers. And it was just such a joyous occasion. We had these families come with their kids. They were playing games. They were eating pizzas. Were able to connect them with resources that the county offers. We had four interpreters present to help make connections and to help integrate these people into our community. And it was a really, really special evening. I'm sure Mrs. DeLonge will also speak to the fun that she had that night. Go ahead to the next slide. So our current EL numbers, we continue to see rapid growth. So what you can see is we started our academic year at 227. We're now up to 238. And we had three families register just this past week, bringing in 12 more students to our school district. So we are going to continue to see this rise. One of our interpreters that was present last week shared that there is a organization in Cumberland County that is bringing in about 90 families from Syria that they are trying to home throughout Cumberland County. We're still waiting to hear how many of those families will be coming and settling within our district. So this number is not going to go down in the near future. So the current number of 238 reflects our active EL students. We have a total of 286 students receiving services and being monitored. Go ahead to the next slide. So the number of languages that we are seeing this year, we're seeing 12 languages. You can see how that number has fluctuated through the years. Go ahead to the next one. And you asked what languages we're seeing. Previously, our primary top three languages that we were servicing was Spanish, Haitian, Creole, and Arabic. And around 2022-23, we saw that the shift started to occur. And now Nepali is our largest demographic, followed by Spanish and Arabic. Next slide. Languages, the other languages that we're servicing this year are on the screen. Some of those, I had no idea where they were from and I had to look up and see what countries are being represented. We have a really diverse group of students. And I want to give a shout out to our EL teachers and to our regular classroom teachers for working with such a diverse population group and trying to support students who have such different language backgrounds. Some of these languages are character, some are script. Some you read from left to right, some from right to left. It is a large, complex task to service these students. Go ahead to our next slide. So I wanted to also provide you with an overview of staffing through the years. In 2000, it should be 2017 through 2020, we had two full-time EL teachers. They were IU contracted. And then you can see how that number has shifted between full-time, part-time, and the total. Some years we have contracted with the IU, some years we have employed them ourselves. Currently, we have five district employees that are servicing those students. Go ahead to the next slide. When you're looking at the caseloads for those five teachers, we're seeing the average caseload of about 47.6. So it's a large caseload that these teachers are handling and we are bursting at the seams with these numbers. Next slide. So when we look at other districts, we did a fast comparison today, looking at how our population compares to other districts in terms of the percent of EL population. So Chambersburg in the Cumberland County, Franklin County area has the largest percent of EL students. We're down at 4.8% of our total population are now EL students. And you can see how that compares to the other schools. There are other schools in the two counties do have EL students, but their numbers were below 1%, so that's why they weren't included. I do want to put the caveat that this is based off of October 2023 data, so it changes dramatically. Like our current population is 6.55%. When this was taken, it was 4.8%. So you can see how we have been changing over time. Next slide. So professional development, I know that was one of the things you all were very concerned about is how are we preparing our teachers to respond to and support our EL students? We had all of our EL teachers go and attend the WEDA conference out in Pittsburgh where they received specific instructional strategies and resources. It's a two and a half day conference. They came back very pumped up and lots of new learning of language theory that they are applying into their classroom. We also, just this past week, hosted the IU to come in and work with our teachers from K to 5 on empowering multilingual learners. As part of this training, they went over the state expectations for servicing EL students, the roles of educators in providing those services, an overview of the language acquisition theory, which I had presented to you all previously, how to read and interpret the WEDA scores, and most importantly, how to plan for accommodations and modifications of instruction based off of those language test scores, and how to provide linguistically responsive instruction using a PLUS framework. So we do have that same training scheduled to come for our secondary teachers in March. That was the soonest we could get it rescheduled for our secondary teachers. Next slide. So what to expect moving forward? I already alluded to 90 families will be settling throughout Cumberland County. They're not all coming here, but they will be settling throughout Cumberland County. And we had just the three, those three families come in just last week. So I would anticipate that we will need additional EL teachers soon. You saw the caseloads, we are very, very full.
How many do you need?
That would depend. My first request would be for a part-time contracted through the IU so that we can find out. With EL population, we're never quite sure if they will be transient or if they will be settling more permanently. So I would recommend a part-time EL, one part-time EL.
Superintendent, excuse me, I was talking to a lady this morning, lives down in Cumberland Valley, a school district. She was saying they built a middle school two years ago, a big right along, 581, you see it. Said now they're contemplating having to build another one. It causes a growth of their growth.
Yeah, Cumberland County is one of the fastest growing counties in the state, Mr. Scott, so you know, just as we see our numbers and I'm about to give an enrollment update, you know, we're, we're not unique in the county. Yeah, we're just growing in, you know, the entire county's feeling the same pressure.
And I agree with that, but are we prepared to, as our facilities, prepared for this growth now or are we gonna look for the future?
So again, those projections that we have, we're on track at the elementary schools to start a new, you know, a new look at that, you know, in terms of what that build will be. We're gonna do our best to use the projections that we have and the borrowing capacity that, that remains to be able to house those students, you know. We can't predict, you know, if 90 families all settle in, in Chambersburg, you know, we, we can't necessarily predict all that. We can take a good, a good look at it and, and do our best to prepare facilities wise and staffing wise. And that's the other side of the coin is, is always the staffing side as well.
Did you, were you able to take a look at like some of the other schools to see like what their staffing ratio is for students?
We're in the process of doing that. We started that investigation today and the data was a little too spotty to share with you. I didn't want to share inaccurate data. What I was able to look at was some of the full-time teachers that are employed by other districts, but what it wasn't reflecting was the instructional aides that are within those classrooms that allow them to keep staffed the way that they are. Like right now, we do not have any EL aides at all. And so that really limits our ability to provide services because the teachers are the only person in the room trying to manage multiple students. So that presents a challenge, but I will get that information for you and bring that back.
And Dr. Donat, it's, it's really about our population and the ratio of caseloads. Would, would you say that's really the driver of it?
Yeah.
I was just kinda curious, it's kinda how we compared with some of the other schools.
Benchmarks can be helpful, but yeah, we really need to make sure that we're providing the services that are required by law regardless. Other questions?
90 families from Cumberland County, where does that information come from?
The organization that is working on providing them with housing. We're in contact with the Christian organization that has sponsored these families and they're in the process of securing housing throughout Cumberland County. When they find the housing, that's when we get the information of the families that are coming. So one of the interpreters who came to the family game night last week, she is one of the point people for that organization and I can get that organization name to you if you'd like.
How does one teacher function with numerous dialects? And I assume they have more than one type of dialect in their class?
It is a challenge. They work, remember when we, I was here previously, we do have some translation tools that can help, but we don't want to be overly reliant on some of our translation tools because the goal is to get students to acquire language as quickly as they can and also to acquire the cultural components of being able to integrate into our community. We have different types of curricula that the teachers use. We start with a lot of pictures and working with pictures and building vocabulary and eventually it grows into being able to speak and into it being able to write.
Do they still move to other classes or they?
Yes, they do, because immersion is very important for language acquisition.
How do they function in the math class or science or anything else?
Do you, I'm, I'm pretty confident I shared the video a couple of months ago of a student, an EL student in a regular classroom. And the way that that student was trying to cope, he would look for social, for visual cues within the room to try to understand. He had a dictionary that was a Spanish-English dictionary to help him find keywords quickly in a JAP. He had a peer near him that he was asking for support. And of course, they work with the teacher as well. And then our EL teacher pulls the students out for more intense support as they can. Yeah, other questions?
I like the pizza party thing. Is that a one-off kind of a thing or are we planning more regular or even permanent kind of extracurricular, kind of maybe even a club or something to support these students?
We've done the family pizza and game night. We've done once a year using our title money to fund that. We can look and investigate to see if there's other ways we can be more inclusive.
Yeah, just, I think I've talked to a bunch of you about this before. I, I know that suggestions that I've received from professors on campus who are experts on this suggest, you know, that if you have a club that helps these kids understand their culture, it actually helps with integration. So, and that's not a huge investment. It's maybe like a coach's salary to, to help these kids feel a little bit more included and happy being here. Yeah, maybe it was one, on one of your previous slides, is the English language learning load kind of spread across K through 12 or is it have more heavily concentrated down in the elementary levels?
We're actually pretty well distributed in terms of the students and in terms of our current teachers with, because we now have five teachers, we have a teacher now in every building except G Blues and one of the elementary teachers travels to G Blues to provide services as needed. So we, we do actually, it is a kind of a nice distribution that it's throughout the district. It isn't one grade getting hit harder or one building getting hit harder than the others.
I can't imagine doing high school in a second language. Thank you.
The Chromebooks will make it a lot easier too, don't they? Because they can look it up a lot easier onto the Chromebooks?
They can. The best thing that they can, they need are the, like an iPad-type translation device. That is super helpful, but again, we have to balance the, those devices with how they are learning to acquire the language for themselves so they're not overly reliant on those translations devices. And we're working to secure more of those tablet-type devices for our students. Anything else?
Yeah, how much of an advance do we get as a district before these families arrive? Is it next?
Most of the time, there's no advanced warning. This organization that is working with the Syrian families has actually been really awesome by letting us know in advance that there are more coming. It's one of the first times we've ever had an advance notice.
So there's no way for us to plan ahead, like going into next year, we'll have X amount of families or?
Not that I'm aware of.
I will say that I know, I've worked with a couple of these organizations, just because I've had students there as interns. Model is generally that they work with the families for about 90 days to get them settled. So that doesn't necessarily mean that they stay for more than the 90 days. It's usually just get them here, get them settled, help them find jobs and more permanent housing, and then another family comes in to, to that housing. And I can't imagine that there's a lot of room. I mean, the housing stock in Chambersburg is pretty well taken up, so I, I don't know that there would be a lot of room for a lot more people, but I mean, never know.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Barwin, finance report?
So there's a couple of reports in your packet. Yeah, if you could bring it up, Troy, that'd be great. Could you bring up the first one or who's controlling it? Leslie?
Leslie, yeah.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to give a high level update on the past three borrowings that we've had. This one's the Series of 22 bond report. The top right there, it shows the total borrowing amount that we received after fees. So that's your 9.7 million number. On the left-hand side, details what the project was, the middle school construction project, high school, middle school parent loop with a budget number of 14.3 million. Now, this, this was also funded with the ESER grant, the 4.3 million from ESER. So that you might see the, the total borrowing amount, you gotta add in the ESER amount too, to get to that budget number. And then as you go across the rows there, this goes back a couple of years. So there's the 21, 22 expense, 22, 23 expense, and 23, 24 expense at a high level. And if you go down through that, you can see our interest number that we've received so far on this is 413,000. And our bottom line, our ending cash balance as of the end of October is 861,000. There's no more current expense in this bond and it's gonna be, it's just waiting on the high school and middle school parent loop now, and that's gonna be paired with the $450,000 grant that was awarded. So if you had the $450,000 grant along with the 860, it's roughly the 1.2 million that we're projecting the high school, middle school parent loop to cost without, you know, barring, barring any big change orders that would come through. Next report is the 2023 bond. So again, you have your borrowing number at the top right after fees, 9.7 million. On the left-hand side, the projects of the stadium, and this was the planning of the high school, middle school, and the loop, a 4.3 million budget number. And again, there's, expense started in 23, 24 there, and then you can see the months so far for 24, 25, detailed out from July through October. And the interest number on this so far, I think that reads 650,000 around there with the bottom line of 5.8 million dollars left in this grant. Obviously, there's still stuff to be expensed through both of those projects. I can get numbers on estimates, again, barring any change orders and get an estimate on what we're thinking would be the ending balance for that borrowing as well. Moving on to the 2024, the GISA report. So this borrowing at the top right again, nine point, roughly 9.7 million after fees. And this was the asset protection project, so updating the buildings with a budget number of 9.4 million. This was recently borrowed, so the expense there you can see was just as of August and September. Interest number at the bottom, 111,000 so far. And we have not, five point, almost 5.7 million left in the GISA bond to be expensed. So those are the three bonds. If you have any questions, I can update this monthly as we go along, just to keep the board updated on what's left in the bonds and the expenses month to month at a high level. Going down to the next report, so shifting gears a little bit, this is a general fund report. And this compares, this is also through October 31st. This compares the current year on the left, left side there, 24, 25. It has our current budget, monthly totals, which would be the month of October, year-to-date numbers, so it'd be July through October there, and then the percent of the budget that's either been expensed or the revenue we've received so far through the fiscal year. And then on the right-hand side, you have 23, 24 to compare it to. So where we were as of this time last year compared to where we are now, it's just a good gauge to, to look at as we, we progress through the year to see where our revenues are and where our expenses are. So the revenues there on the left-hand side, they're broken out, local, state, and federal. I have the budget numbers there and then what we received for October, year-to-date numbers, and then that percent of budget. And then if you scroll down there, those are all the expenses listed off, instruction, support services, non-instructional. If you keep going down, there's debt service down there and capital improvements. And then you get to the bottom line, you can see our total expense budget versus our total revenue budget and how we're trending compared to where we were last year at this time. So I know there's a lot of numbers, a lot of data there. If you have any questions as you look through that, please let me know. But this is another report that I think's helpful to be updated monthly, especially as we get close to budget time and especially as we get close to the end of the year to project out where we might see ourselves ending the fiscal year. If you go to the next attachment.
Did you have a question, Dr.?
The, the federal revenue, is that lower this year because of ESER's going away?
Correct, yeah. Of all the ESER monies.
That's a big.
Departed, yes, yep. Now, what's not in there is, you know, how we're getting that new, like RTL money that the state's providing, like that number wouldn't reflect in the revenue budget because the budget was done way before the state unfortunately does their budget. So those numbers wouldn't reflect in there. It's reflecting that $3.5 million deficit. It's reflecting that $3.5 million deficit. And the last report here is, this is just a draft budget timeline. The Act One timeline just came out recently, last week. So I can get this updated to reflect some of the timings that we need to hit for the state requirements. This is just a draft that I put together. Again, if you have any questions on this or if you'd like to see something changed or added, please just let me know. And if you go to the bottom there, this is kind of where, these were the dates used last year. If you go all the way to the bottom, I'd like to try and stick with these dates, just with the timing with the state and what we have to put into PDE and the timing that it takes, I'd like to stick with what's previously been done. Getting that proposed final budget done in the second meeting in April and then the final budget done in that first meeting in June. That gives us enough time to advertise for inspection for both of those. So any questions you guys might have, please, please let me know. If not tonight, if you have any, any questions as you look through those, let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Enrollment report as of November 1st. Cyber Charter, 250 students, KLA, 215. Elementary level K through 3, 1,146. Fourth and fifth grade at SACE, 542. Secondary schools, middle school, 850. And the high school, 1,095 with 25 students in various placements. We're right at that 3,658 level. Balancing again closer to that 3,700. We keep dancing with that number. So that's where we are with enrollment. Moving on to donations. And I'll just say upfront, you know, thanks to everyone that was able to participate in the Veterans Day program. It was amazing as usual. Thanks to Jenny Lopez and others for putting that together. So our first donation was to that program from the Kiwanis Club of Shippensburg, a monetary donation of $200. Shippensburg SACE staff proceeds from the Apple fundraiser to support the Facility Dog on 1,147. That's apparently a lot of Apples. Anonymous monetary donation of $200 to help with outstanding lunch debt for students in the Shippensburg School District. Moving on to account balances. So we would just, just for transparency, the Senior High Activity Fund has 100,872.66. The Middle School Activity Fund has 47,878.50. SACE Student Activity Fund has 10,550.30. James Byrd, 7,419.13. And the Nancy Grayson Activity Fund has 17,610.88. And that concludes my superintendent report.
Superintendent, I hate to disturb you. That's the new maintenance man. We in the facility know the new maintenance man is
I'm sorry.
New maintenance supervisor, Mr. Craig.
Mr. Linton.
We on the facility know him, but I don't think the rest of the board knows him, do they?
Take this opportunity to introduce our new Director of Operations and Maintenance, Mr. Curtis Linton. Just joined us about a week ago. So we're excited to have him and he's hit the ground running for us. So welcome, Curtis.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Item 4A, we have the approval of minutes and those are attached. 4B are the following finance reports, the bills of payments, the financial reports, the tax reports and the budget reports. Item 4C is the policies for second reading and approval. 4D is the girls volleyball booster bylaws and administration recommends approval of the proposed revisions. 4E is the personnel professional and support with the following leave of absences, transfers, new appointments and resignations. Is there a motion to approve items 4A through 4E?
Fred Scott, make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Scott, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carey, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The action agenda, item 5A is the Burns Health of York. Susan Fink, Executive Director of the Greyhound Foundation is seeking approval to apply for and accept in-kind services from Burn Health of York to augment partnership for the better health. Burns Health provides onsite services to reach additional students and to further message, message of healthy lifestyles. That is the value of $5,766. Is there a motion to approve item 5A?
No, do approve.
Motion made by Mr. Bard, second.
Second. We're like three of us.
Second by Dr. Lyman, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5B is the New Story Schools. New Story operates a private licensed school in Carlisle and provides intensive academic and behavioral interventions for special education students. The program provided is based on a four rate pricing model, low, medium, high and extra high. Is there a motion to approve item 5B?
Fred Scott, make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Scott, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carey, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 5C is the Agreement for Independent Educational Evaluation. Administration recommends approval of the attached agreement for an independent educational evaluation between Dr. Lee and one student enrolled in the Shippensburg area school district. The cost of the evaluation is not to exceed $5,000. And this is for a student that was previously approved for an independent evaluation. However, we are changing the evaluator. Is there a motion to approve item 5C?
Fred Scott, make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Scott, second.
Second.
Second by Dr. Lyman, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 5D is the TransAct Communications Software Package. The Transportation Committee and Administration recommend the approval of the following contract with TransAct Communications for a new transportation software package. Contract will be paid for from the transportation budget. Is there a motion to approve item 5D?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Carey, second.
Fred Scott, second.
Second by Mr. Scott, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 5E is the Approval to Contract with Harley Royer and Associates for As-Built Drawing. Administration has been notified by Southampton Township Franklin County that an as-built inspection must occur for the parking lot work done at the administration building. This as-built drawing will need to be given to the Southampton Township County Engineers to make sure everything has been performed as planned. That cost is $1,500. Is there a motion to approve item 5E?
Show move.
Motion made by Mr. Carey, second.
Fred Scott, second.
Second by Mr. Scott, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 5F is the Shippensburg Athletic Field, PCO number 5, the Topsoil Birm. Administration through the Facilities Committee recommends the approval of a change order to install a topsoil birm per schedules for sketches developed by KNW. Prices include additional ENS measures as shown in the attached sketches. The birm to be built is not structural and should not be utilized for any structural loads, i.e. bleachers, walkway pads, vehicle traffic. The cost excludes repairs to existing paved access road to the softball field. Is there a motion to approve item 5F?
Fred Scott, make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Scott, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carey, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 5G, the High School Soundboard Replacement. Administration recommends purchasing a new soundboard and stage rack from All Sound Pro for the high school to replace the old one that has ceased to work. This cost will be $6,098 and will be paid out of the capital maintenance fund balance. Is there a motion to approve item 5G?
Show move.
Motion by Mr. Carey, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bard, discussion.
Hallelujah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 5H is the GeForce Security Solutions Agreement. Administration and Safety and Security Committee recommends approval of the attached agreement with GeForce to provide the district with three armed school safety officers. The cost structure is as follows and will be paid from a combination of already budgeted funds and additional grant monies. Upon approval, notice will be given to the Shippensburg Borough informing them that the district intends to withdraw from the SRO agreement currently in place. GeForce agreement is attached, the 2425 academic school year, $220,000. 2526 is 227,000 and for the 2627 school year, 234,000. Is there a prove, there a motion to approve item 5H?
Fred Scott, make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Scott, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kressler, discussion.
Yeah, I thought they were going to give us a prorated price for the 2425 year.
Yeah, they they will.
But if we pass this, then we're saying we guarantee them 220,000 dollars?
I think that it was a error on
When I'm reading here, don't say it's prorated.
It did state that it was prorated.
It will be prorated, Mr. Bard.
It will be, but you know, okay, go ahead.
In the, in the agreement there, it has under section five compensation, there's a star at the bottom of that chart. It says the year one rate, 2425 academic year, to be prorated to reflect the actual number of hours worked following the execution between the contract between the both the parties. Yeah, right, right at the bottom there.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any further discussion?
I'll just, I mean, not a huge fan of this and I kind of expressed that last board meeting, so I won't say a lot more.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No. No.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Jim Bard?
Yes.
Mr. Mike Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Levi Kressler?
Yes.
Dr. Nathan Goats, absent. Dr. Michael Lyman?
No.
Mr. Kirk Noggle?
No.
Mr. Fred Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Darren Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Steph Everly?
Yes.
Six yes, two no.
Thank you.
Motion passed.
Yes.
Motion passed, yes, thank you. Item 5I is the Builders Risk Insurance for the High School, Middle School and Parent Loop Projects. Administration recommends approval of the following attached quote for the Builders Risk Insurance for the High School, Middle School and Parent Loop. And that cost is $11,510 and includes the fees. Is there a motion to approve item 5I?
Show move.
Motion by Mr. Carey, second.
Fred Scott, second.
Second by Mr. Scott, discussion.
Can I ask a dumb question?
All questions are welcome.
So I don't remember voting on something like this before with our previous projects. So is this?
We, we did.
We? Okay. This is just a normal thing we do with every project. Okay.
Along with the recent one, it didn't have a lot of furniture fixtures, all that stuff with the stadium, so it wouldn't have been fresh in your mind either.
Thanks, that's it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have reached the discussion agenda.
Do we have one more?
We ain't done yet, though.
I'm sorry. You did not. 5J is the High School, Middle School Renovations Developers Agreement. Administration recommends approval of the attached developers agreement with the Borough of Shippensburg as part of the middle school, high school renovations. The agreement has been reviewed by both our legal counsel and the borough's legal counsel. This document is necessary to satisfy the conditional approval and to record the land development plan. Is there a motion to approve item 5J?
Fred Scott, make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Scott, second.
Second.
Second by Dr. Lyman, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, the discussion agenda. Item 6A is the request to form a new activity. The Alzheimer's Awareness Club. School teacher Tony Masara is requesting to form an Alzheimer's Awareness Club at the high school to spread awareness on Alzheimer's disease by hosting fundraiser and events. Item 6B and pursuant with Board Policy 239. Exchange students from Brazil, Germany, France and Netherlands have all met the qualifications to attend the Shippensburg Area School District for the 2526 school year. And administration recommends approval of these students.
Is it one per country?
We, we usually host four
Okay.
Per year.
One per country.
Right.
So, sorry, quick question, are any of them soccer players?
Well, Brazil, Germany, France and Netherlands, so
Never know.
To roll the dice on that.
Yeah.
6C is the donation. The Shippensburg Area School District Music Band Boosters. The boosters is requesting authorizations to donate to YBH301MS Yamaha marching baritones to the Shippensburg Area School District for use by the high school marching band. The approximate value of the donation is $6,448. 6D is the Grade Four Science Kit. Administration is request, requests approval to pilot the Thinking Bigger science curriculum for grade four. And those funds will come from grants secured by the Greyhound Foundation. Thanks, too. And the Thinking Bigger Contract. Administration recommends permission to purchase Thinking Bigger science curriculum kits and professional development for the fourth grade science teachers. The EITC and Greenwood funding will cover the $24,600 cost. 6F is the New Story Schools Student Information Form. A new student has registered the district and the student was already attending New Story in Carlisle and will continue to stay there. And this is an unbudgeted expense at $579 per day for the extra high level of intensity. 6G is the Approval of Transportation Drivers for the 2425 school year. 6H is the Disposal of the 2000 Chevy Box Truck that I believe Mr. Noggle spoke to earlier that the band boosters would be getting the box portion of that. 6I is the to enhance the security cameras at the middle school. Administration recommends advertising for RFPs to enhance the security camera system at the middle school. The project will be paid for using the PCCD grant money from the 2324 Competitive Grant Award. 6J is also an item that Mr. Noggle referred to regarding the $42,000 budgeted floor scrubber, which will come out of the capital maintenance budget. 6K is the replacement of the two water heaters at the intermediate school. Administration is recommending the replacement of the two water heaters. Man Plumbing and Heating will be providing and installing those at a cost of 97,300. And those are also budgeted to be taken out of the capital maintenance project. 6L is the Independent Testing for the Shippensburg High School, Middle School Project. Administration recommends approval of the attached proposal for independent testing for the Shippensburg High School, Middle School Project. This testing is completed based on the hourly, hourly rates per the attached proposal. Monthly invoices from the Kleinfelder Group will be sent in and will be verified by Site Logix prior to payment from the district. The amount is not a fixed contract and not to exceed the amount of $75,000. 6M is the Change Order Authority. Administration recommends approval of the granting of change order approval authority as described below. The current high school, middle school and parent loop will require expedited decision making regarding change order work to provide the best opportunity to complete work in a timely manner. In order to facilitate approval of changes in the construction, limited authority should be provided by the board to allow for the Superintendent, Director of Operations and Maintenance and Business Manager to collectively authorize nondiscretionary change orders. Any such change orders will be communicated to the full board as they arise. Administration recommends that the Board of School Directors provide authority to individual members of the Facilities Committee to co-authorize changes up to $25,000 per each change. per each change item, limited to nondiscretionary changes. No more than three approvals will be made before a reauthorization of this authority by the board will take place. Any questions on any of the discussion items? So we are moving on to the last portion of the Citizens' Comments Regarding Non-Agenda Items. Is there any member of the audience that wishes to comment on a non-agenda item? Okay, we are on to board comments. Mr. Scott?
Nothing.
Mr. Carey?
Who am I?
Mr. Kressler?
Sure, Mr. August mentioned the Veterans Day Breakfast. I went to it. It was the first time that I think I've actually been to it since I was here years ago as a student, but super cool event. It's just almost breathtaking to see. I think the one gentleman was a nineteen forty-three grad, World War II vet.
Ninety, ninety-plus years old.
Yeah, and I think they said still drives, like amazing story, so really cool event. Of course, as Mr. Blount said, the football team finished their season this, this past Friday, so great, great season for them. Congrats on all their success. Go back to the Veterans Day Breakfast. Thank you to the students who helped serve food to all those kids as well, which I'm not sure, that was probably Miss Lopez orchestrating that, but awesome stuff. Band had twenty seniors who performed on their last Friday night football game, so congrats to them as well. Another season of great musical entertainment during the course of the games. The middle school band was like super in the Veterans Day Parade this past weekend. Shout out to them. Powder puff game Thursday night, seven PM, Veterans Stadium at Memorial Park. No cost to attend. Donations are gratefully accepted to, to support the Maroon Platoon. And then, of course, you get to see Mr. August putting his whistle back on, back under the lights, coaching football again, so pretty cool event.
Five thirty?
Five thirty? Sorry, not seven o'clock, five thirty.
And I would just point out, in, in the Veterans Day, our, our two cadets in the junior ROTC program played a, a huge role in that, and it was awesome. You know, one of them's here tonight, Mr. Wagner, right? Yeah, so appreciate you that evening, or, you know, coming tonight, but also what you did for that day, so thank you.
That was all I got.
Mr. Bard?
None at night.
Mr. Knogel?
Nope.
Dr. Lyman? Mr. Donovan?
Yeah, I'll just second what Mr. Kressler said with the Veterans Day event. I was able to join him there, and Mrs. Everly was there as well. It was a very well-put-on event, and had a really good turnout. I think the cafeteria was much maxed out, and the auditorium as well. It was, it was, it was really, really cool to be a part of that and, and see that put
Of course, the Veterans Day program is always one of my favorite events, along with the G Blues Friendsgiving Luncheon that they put on. Some of my, it is on the twenty-second, some of my favorite events, so I just want to thank everyone, all the hard work that goes into that, and our food service team. The food was delicious, and I had an, I had the opportunity to see that individual at the Veterans Day Parade on Sunday and shake his hand. He was still out and about, and it's awesome. But I have nothing further. Some information, date savers, November thirteenth, the Safety and Security Meeting. December second, we'll be meeting again for the Committee of the Whole and the Reorganization and Planning and Action Meeting. December fifth, Facilities. December tenth, the Community Outreach Committee. And December twelfth, we have the Transportation Committee meeting. Just a reminder that November twenty-seventh, there is an Act Eighty Day Parent and Student, Parent Teacher Conferences, two-hour early dismissal for all staff. November twenty-eighth through December second, there's the Thanksgiving holiday, and the district is closed. And December third is an In-Service Day and no school for students. Meeting adjourned.
Before nine o'clock, whoa!